I will call this a board meeting. I just took 544 to order. And Claire, will you take all please?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes.
Present.
Stephen Viglino.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to FM Bank for their donation towards the Saffal Scoreboard. Someone offer that resolution? Move for its adoption?
Offer the resolution move for its adoption.
In a second.
One second.
Missy, will you take role?
Yes. Stephen Viglino.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes. Yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thanks. So we'll move into our board reports and start with Kirby Anderson.
Yes. No finance committee meeting since we last met and no activities. When the 544 foundation, we did meet on July 11th last week. And some of the highlights of that were, we will be, the 544 foundation will be serving lunch at the in-service on Thursday, the 29th of August in the staff's rack. We had the Legends Golf Tournament fundraiser on Friday of last week on the 12th. And I was out there registering, we had 19 teams, a beautiful day for it. And it was the last Legends Golf Tournament that the, that the foundation won't be running. And I think in the, in the future, we'll be taking over some of that and get the money that we raised for that into our activities fund. So Derek was out there and I think he's already got something planned for this fall. It's selected Legends to have a scramble type thing to, as a fundraiser for our activities department. Talked about distinguished alumni, we have a couple of alumni, I don't think they've announced it yet, so I won't name the names, but that is part of the homecoming and Hall of Fame on September 20th and 21st. We have a couple of board members that are, are going off the board. And so we reviewed three or four NIMs and so those, those requests are going up to those people. And probably the, the biggest thing is we had requested for the 544 foundation board to look at paying for half of the, the playground at Lincoln. And that particular issue got tabled until the August meeting. So I think they hadn't had time to fully digest the ramifications of that. So, and the last thing is Otter Pride Night, September 6th. And we'll be serving tacos in a bag at sure for Otter Pride. So that's about it for the 544 foundation.
Alright. Any questions for Kirby? Thank you.
Yep.
And then we'll move on to Melanie Cole.
Well, we can take special ed call off my to do's.
Yes.
And, and region one, we had a meeting last month. We continue to refine the steps for replacing the director there. And then we, we looked at the budget, which is in great shape, of course, there. And it's phenomenal really how much interest we're making for a public entity. But the other, the biggest piece was compensation packages. And it's a smaller operation, but Bob proposes not only a percentage package overall, but then individual adjustments, just one-time adjustments to do fair market value and reward outstanding work. So that, we went through all that. We have a plan after the new person starts that Bob will continue to do the telecom equity stuff because that's a unique kind of governmental beast that's very confusing. And so we'll give him a contract to do that independently for at least a year. So that's, meeting confirmed, did not meet. Negotiations, we are on for mediation on August 11th with the special education areas.
Any questions for Melanie? Alright, thanks. Missy Hermes.
Curriculum review will not meet again until October. And then policy is meeting today.
This afternoon?
Yep.
Awesome.
So we will have a lot to report next time.
Yeah. Alright, thanks. My reports, wellness won't meet until September. Buildings and grounds, we're having our board retreat out at Lincoln School. So that'll be fun to see the progress out there in that movement. And then like Missy said, policy meets this afternoon. Matt Lemke.
Yeah, Minnesota High School, we, they just did a new board orientation this month. That was a real important report.
Steve Viglino.
Staff development does not meet till fall, so nothing to report.
Alright, then we'll just do superintendent Drake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, some thank yous, Jody Zesba and Matthew Hammer from Ellers, Peter Martin from Kennedy Graven, Preston Early, Ari Morton, and Brian Berg with Zerberg Architects. I just wanted to thank them for their work over the holiday week in providing needed documents for the review and comment. So we were under a tight timeline and appreciated the extra efforts that they provided to get that information to the school district. Also want to thank the custodial staff for the extra work that they've undertaken this summer in preparing the district for the move. So as we travel to the new elementary, or Lincoln today, you will see that the teacher boxed supplies, those are in the classrooms now. They need to be unpacked once the teachers return, but furniture and the supplies are in there and ready to go. And then the mechanical staff, just want to thank them for all the work they've been doing this summer and a special thanks. It's interesting how little things can change the way pieces take place. But with 935 moving out of the district with their leased space, that's where the mail was dropped off for the 544 foundation. And so rather than going through the regular roll of working with the postmaster and trying to get an address change and then changing all of their letterhead and documents and all of that stuff, they purchased a mailbox and our mechanical department installed that just outside the entrance to the vocational building down at Roosevelt. Looks really sharp and saved a lot of extra time in working out those details on the part of the foundation. Lincoln Phase Two, just an update on some of the work taking place. Interior classrooms really are done at this point. Probably the lone exception to that is the glass that goes, the window panes or glass panes that go into the doors from the hallway. That was originally ordered with the wrong size. And so it has taken about a month or so to get the correct glass. And that still hasn't arrived, but it should arrive here any time. And then the major work on the interior continues to take place in building the new firewall. This is a complicated process because it has a fire rating. There are multiple layers to it that all have to conform to specific state standards. So it's a time-consuming process. But when we go to Lincoln today, you're likely to see quite a bit of work going on still at that firewall location that separates the preschool ECFE side of the building from the kindergarten side of the building. On the exterior, the roof is done now. The roof had, that was something like 50 days or so that were off due to all the rain that we had. So that extended their work calendar. But that is complete. We did, we had a brief scare last week on some information about the delivery of the playground equipment. That happened to be a miscommunication with the quota playgrounds from their office. It is still on target to ship July 23rd. It should, it's coming from Minnesota, so it should just take a day or so to get here. Pending the installer's schedule, they are working on another project right now. They potentially could begin installing it almost as soon as that arrives. If not, it'll be maybe a week beyond that. The whole process from installing the equipment to the kind of rubberized surface on there will take a total of two to three weeks. So that project will be, should be well completed prior to the start of the school year. And then on the irrigation side, so when we go out there today, you'll see on the green space, that's all leveled, it's all fenced in now. We need to install the irrigation and that'll go into the new playground area. We're also installing irrigation into the southwest playground area that's for preschool and children's corner. We've had a few challenges with that. We're going to need to do some directional boring to tie into the water line. We had hoped to maybe avoid that, but the pipe wasn't the right diameter, so that's what's going to happen there. But things are moving along. The other major piece is the driveway connecting the northeast corner of the building to Pioneer Road. That is probably two-thirds constructed, but that's, that's well underway as well. And then on the circular drop-off area, the concrete work is all complete there. The only thing that remains is putting down the asphalt for that turnaround. The other major piece I wanted to share with today's report is the review and comment that occurs later on the school board agenda. So I will go through for the public, a couple of quick pieces on this. We're looking at a two-part, two-question ballot on the November 5th upcoming election. Question number one, shall the school board of independent school district number 544, Fergus Falls Public Schools, be authorized to issue in general obligation school building bonds in an amount not to exceed $48,840,000 to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of a new grades three through five elementary school facility? That's question number one. Question number two can only pass if question number one is approved by the voters. School district question number one is approved, shall the school board of independent school district number 544, Fergus Falls Public Schools, also be authorized to issue its general obligation school building bonds in an amount not to exceed $910,000 to provide funds for the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities, including the construction and equipping of soccer and baseball fields at the new grades three through five elementary school facility? So what are the major differences between the ballot question that was before the public on May 14th versus what they will see on November 5th? First of all, pretty significant adjustment on the total cost. Went from $54.8 million, single ballot question, to $48,840,000. That's question number one. And then question number two would bring the combined total, if both questions were to pass, to $49,750,000. How was that accomplished? There was a reduction in the building square footage. The question in May had 102,000 square foot building. That's been reduced to 96,415 square feet. And then there's a reduction in the budget allocation for site improvements. Most prominently, the removal of the middle school baseball and soccer fields from question number one. And that is presented to the public as an optional question number two, dependent on question number one again passing. How did this affect the tax impact? So I'm just going to talk briefly about residential homestead and commercial industrial. As you can see on the chart prepared by Ellers, on a $250,000 property, which is about the average market value for residential property in the Fergus Falls Public School District, the single question, question number one, would result in $86 annual increase. If question two were also passed, that would be an additional $4 annually. So it would either be $86 if only question one passed, or $90 if question two were also to pass. In comparison to the May 14th question, single ballot question, a $250,000 residential homestead had an annual increase of $100 per year. So $100 versus $86, single question on November 5th. On the commercial industrial side, if we have a business valued at half a million dollars, question number one would be $396 versus May 14th, 453. If question number two were to also pass, that would result in an additional $18 added on to that as well. So some substantial savings from what we had on the May 14th ballot. You can see the tax impact, given the construction inflation that's taken place since the last major debt took place in the district at or around 2010. It's simply not possible to build new and maintain a, and get the facilities that we need and maintain a flat tax impact on our community. But we can see from this table that the increase is, is really not markedly higher than what it was before, if you, for the public. Looking at the gray with the smaller maroon banding, the maroon banding is lease levy dollars. You can see that the debt is tailing off after taxes payable 2027. And then after taxes payable 2030, the district has really expired its existing bond debt. The blue columns with the white polka dots in them represent new debt that would be taken on. And as you look at this table from the table before it, the second table is questions number one and two combined, if both were to pass. You can see that the tax impact on question number two is really pretty negligible. As you flip from side to side, it's just a tiny, tiny sliver of change in tax impact if the community were to pass question number two as well. This is a proposed timeline prepared by Ari Morton. We have some work leading up to the November 5th election. But if it were to pass, there are a number of construction design and building phases that take place with an anticipated construction completion timeline of or around December of 2026. So in that respect, it's not ideal that the project would be finished halfway through the school year, but that's certainly some discussion that could take place about the transition if the public approves the ballot questions on November 5th. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for superintendent Drake?
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move into our general consent items. We have our minutes from our June 24, 2024 board meeting and our July 8, 2024 special board meetings. And then back to Kirby for the bills and treasuries report.
Okay. Matt and I came in early this morning and met with Renee and went through the bills. The treasures report is, is looking very favorable right now. Our fund balance right now is sitting at about 22.5 million. And that is up about just between three and four million over last year. Food service continues to do well. Community Ed is at 385,000. Food service is just over a million. And activities is right around 200,000. So all of our funds are in pretty good shape right now. We did go through 34 pages of bills this morning, so I'll just go through and do some of the highlights. About $260,000 in bond payments that were made. Quite a few, this particular billing period, we do construction payments. And so we had mostly Lincoln and that was grand total there of just under a million dollars, 983,000 dollars that went out towards the Lincoln project. And it was everything from tax abatement funds that went to the parking lot or driveways to the country mechanical to just pretty much just a little bit of everything for all of the vendors. Cameras and paging at Lincoln, that was out of the construction fund, that was in our expense fund and that was about 23,000 dollars. We put out $12,000 towards the HVAC upgrade at Cleveland, that will eventually be 149,000 dollars. $37,000, we got door G replaced over at, over at Roosevelt. So that's the one that comes in right by the concessions area, by the Roosevelt Gym. We're starting to see some moving expenses. We had about 4,500 with the LA transfer as we're moving boxes around and I'm sure that will go up some more. A lot of furniture going into Lincoln, a lot of innovative office solutions. We had about just under $100,000 in furniture that went out this, this page this month. Other highlights, we had some wifi that, that was going in, outdoor cameras, a couple of buildings with tech check. Again, more furniture, more supplies also, under supplies from Coopers going to various Starting to see a few curriculum and software upgrades that pay each year. One of them was for our absentee's tracking. And I think middle school furniture, because we had some classes that we had some dual use, there's been about $6,000 in middle school furniture that we paid this month. So grand total, we had just over $2 million went out this month, between the debt redemption and the building destruction, that was about, about just over 1.2 million of that. So right around 776,000 that went out for general fund to various things. So I want to thank Matt for coming early and Renee as usual, everything's in order.
Awesome. Thank you. And then we'll move to personnel.
Good morning, everyone. We're starting to see some increases here, so my list will probably get longer and longer as we obviously move into August. Under personnel, certified staff hires, we have Sidney Honig as a speech-language pathologist. She'll be working here at Kennedy Secondary School. Nathan Knats, high school choir teacher. Derek, again, obviously at high school. And then we have two substitute teachers that will start the year. Alex, Alex Howe, Alexander Howe for science, and then Dan Fritz for speech-language pathologist. Certified staff leave with absence is a request for the full school year next year, Sue Rankin and Kristi Angus. Certified staff resignation, Estelle Dendro, she's a special ed teacher here. Support staff resignations, Kathy Ostad, Grover Republican Classroom Assistant, Angie Julesbrood, Special Education Paraprofessional, and then Molly Dan, the Simmons Secretary. Support staff hires, Mackenzie Cunningham, parent educator at Cleveland. And then we have some individual contracts, payroll and benefits manager, which is Sherry Smith, for a two-year contract starting July 1st and running through June 30th, 2026. And then the Supreme School is Jeff Drake, a three-year contract starting in 2025, July 1st, 2025. And then last, we have a two-year contract with, between us and the Title I paraprofessionals. So I would recommend these for board approval.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion?
The contract with the Title I pairs, that's consistent with, with the professional staff. So I'm not promoting that. Is that a factor?
This is all the teachers.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Consent items are approved. We don't have any old business, so we'll move into new business. The first item is a motion to elect Melanie Cole to serve on the collaborative's governing board.
So moved.
Oh, yes, second.
Okay.
So Missy first?
Yep.
Matt, second?
Any discussion on that?
I'm willing to serve in this capacity and I have previously had, worked, been on a collaborative.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. Then we have the school year 25 Lakes Country Service Cooperative School Board District Membership Agreement, effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Any motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. Then we have the school year 25 Lakes Country Service Cooperative School Board District Membership Agreement, effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Any motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That agreement is approved. We have a wage adjustment for substitute staff positions effective 2024 through 2025 school year. Certified teacher substitutes to $170 a day or $85 for a half day. And then support staff substitutes, $1875 per hour. Can I get a motion to approve those wage adjustments?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. And we have a memorandum of understanding between ISD 544 and Department of the Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, effective through June 30th, 2029. Any motion to approve that memorandum?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. And we have another position, an additional head custodian position, one FTE at Lincoln School, effective 2024 through 2025 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that position?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. And we have a memorandum of understanding between ISD 544 and Department of the Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, effective through June 30th, 2029. Any motion to approve that memorandum?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. Additional special education third-party billing secretary position, which is one We got some supportive documentation on this one, effective 2024 through 2025. Can I get a motion to approve that position?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That position is approved. And we have another position, an additional head custodian position, one FTE at Lincoln School, effective 2024 through 2025 school year. Can I get a motion to approve that position?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That position is approved. Minnesota State Colleges and Universities Concurrent Enrollment Program Contract between ISD 544 and the state of Minnesota, effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Someone offer a motion to approve that contract?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Contract is approved. Then we have the Minnesota Department of Education MPE Review and Comment for our proposed new elementary school, which Jeff spoke of today. Any motion to approve the review and comment?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. And then we have approval of plans and specs for ALC and Armory and Parking Lot Resurfacing Project and authorization to go out bid, go out for bids. Any motion?
I will make that motion.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. That is approved. So then our next meeting, our next school board meeting is Monday, August 12, 2024, here in the Otter Pride Meeting Room at 7:15 a.m. And after our meeting this morning, we'll be heading out to Lincoln School for our school board retreat. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second.
One second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We are adjourned. And after our meeting this morning, we'll be heading out to Lincoln School for our school board retreat. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second?
One second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. We are adjourned.